They're short, though.
Evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. If you wouldn't mind, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the July of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everyone is here, so we'll roll call. Madam Clerk?
There's no request under Roll Call Island A. Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Kern?
Here.
Councilmember Mackin?
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Here.
And Mayor Lent.
Here. All right. Adoption of tonight's agenda, can I get a first and a second, please?
So moved.
A second?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay, so we're gonna move on to awards and presentations, and we have three items on awards and presentation, we have two proclamations. The first one is proclaiming that May is Mental Health Month. So San Mateo County in California, the 2025 May Mental Health Month theme is mental health as a continuum. This theme challenges the binary idea of healthy versus unhealthy mental health, normalizing the wide range of mental health experiences and encouraging individuals to embrace and accept the full spectrum of their well-being. So whereas mental health and substance use conditions are treatable health conditions, and treatment works, there is no shame in seeking it, and people who have mental health and substance use conditions can recover and lead full and meaningful lives. And whereas one out of three adults in the county live with a mental health matter, and more than half of the people worldwide will live with a mental health condition in their lifetime. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic triggered a 25% increase in the prevalence of anxiety and depression worldwide, and now therefore be it resolved by the City of Brisbane City Council, therefore concurring that the City of Brisbane hereby recognizes May 2025 as Mental Health Month in the City of Brisbane to enhance public awareness of mental health to help end the stigma and direct members of the community to resources and support for mental health and substance use conditions. And here to accept the proclamation is Walter Ng from Community Engagement Supervisor, he's a Community Engagement Supervisor of Star Vista Crisis Center.
Hi, good evening.
Thank you, Walter.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city manager, staff, and residents of Brisbane. My name is Walter Ng, and I use he/him pronouns. I am the Star Vista Crisis Center Community Engagement Supervisor. The Crisis Center operates a 24/7 crisis intervention and suicide prevention hotline handling calls, texts, and chats from both local and national sources, supporting the mental health of all San Mateo County residents. Our crisis counselors provide immediate support, conduct rest assessments, develop plans to keep people safe, and offer compassionate connections. Additionally, the Crisis Center facilitates mental health and suicide preventions, suicide presentations, as well as post-crisis interventions for local school districts, nonprofit organizations, local government agencies, and community-based organizations. These services raise to aim to raise mental health awareness and foster resilience and support throughout our county. Thank you to Brisbane for proclaiming May 2025 as May Mental Health Month, and that is observed across San Mateo County, California, and the United States. Mental health is essential to a person's life in the same way as physical health, and a hesitation to talk about mental health adds to the notion that the topic is forbidden. It is important to normalize conversations of surrounding mental health so people can feel empowered to seek the help that they need. Mental health is a key opportunity to reduce stigma and reconnect people to services and promote wellness for mental health and substance use conditions. Lime green is the national color for May mental health and represents how we can bring a light to an important issue that may be hidden or seen in an negative way. Mental Health Month is important to me because as someone who guides discussions in schools and in mental health and across communities, both aging adults, parents, individuals that need the support, I witness firsthand the profound impacts of mental health well-being, but also how it touches the lives of everyday individuals is not necessarily something that ends and starts, it's always a continuum, just like the theme was. So starting today, I invite everyone to take action on one or more of the following options. Number one, wear a lime green ribbon or put one on your social media account to create and start those conversations about mental health. Number two, learn more about mental health resources available to you by visiting 988lifeline.org or sanmateocrisis.org. And number three, attend or host a mental health awareness event in your community. Once again, thank you so much for your time, and thank you, Brisbane, for recognizing May as Mental Health Month.
Yeah, you know, thank you, Walter, and yeah, you know, when you look at the numbers, every one of us knows someone who is dealing with mental illness. It is, I don't know, I guess maybe you would call it an epidemic, I mean, it's something that is part of our lives, and so suppressing it doesn't help. Bringing it out in the open, the way that you are with the county, is the way to go. And I know that the City of Brisbane is also doing some things to promote Mental Health Month, and City Manager Jeremy Dennis, you wanna let us know what those are?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the chair. In addition to the proclamation tonight, we've been promoting materials related to Mental Health Awareness Month in our local newsletter, and we're also gonna be lighting up the city hall in the colors. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. All right, Walter, why don't you come on up and accept the proclamation, please? Yeah, why not? Thank you so much. All right, for our second proclamation this evening, we're reclaiming May as Wildfire Preparedness Month. Whereas in California, over 2 million homes are at risk of wildfire, and whereas last year, 8,024 wildfires burned over 1 million acres across the state, and whereas 90% of all wildfires are human-caused. Human acts of carelessness result in wildfire disasters every year, and whereas each year more people move into wildland urban interface areas, increasing the need to raise awareness among our citizens on how they can protect their property from wildfire losses. And whereas Janasis Protect, formerly known as Zone Haven, has been adopted as a countywide tool to assist with informed evacuations during wildfire, and we encourage know your zone before an emergency arises. And whereas the North County Fire Authority encourages fire-safe behavior by all who live, work, and recreate throughout the City of Brisbane. And whereas each of us can do our part to prepare for wildfire emergencies by taking steps to make effective changes to our homes and landscape to reduce the risk of wildfire. And now therefore, I Cliff Lent, Mayor of the City of Brisbane, on behalf of the City Council, do now proclaim May 2025 as Wildfire Preparedness Month and encourage all Brisbane residents to increase their knowledge and awareness of proper safety measures to protect themselves from the devastating effects of wildfires. And so we have Mr. Clyde Preston to come on up from North County Fire to accept the proclamation.
Mayor Lentz and members of the council, thank you so much for acknowledging Wildfire Preparedness Month for the month of May. And just to let you know, this month, Tuesday, May 13th, here in the community meeting room from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., we'll be having our wildfire awareness event where members of the community can just drop in, no appointment necessary, and have lots of good information on wildfire preparedness and things you can do for home hardening and ready, set, go, and programs like that, and SMC Alert. So we encourage all members of the community to please come out on the Tuesday, May 13th, from 5:00 to 8:00 here in the community meeting room as well to learn about some really good stuff, we can do, prepare your homes. And just to let you know, I mean, obviously, every year, we have a very intensive weed abatement program. Well, in the month of June, we will be driving all the streets of Brisbane and looking out for weed abatement, things like that, you know, sending letters to people's homes, and even our commercial areas as well. So we're all geared up and ready to go, so hopefully make it a good, safe fire season as well.
Yeah, no, thank you. How many years have you been in serving Brisbane? You've been here a long time.
Yeah, well, total with the North County Fire, there were 19 years, and probably majority of that, probably about 15 to 18 years.
Yeah, no, you really care about our community, and we all appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Preston, why don't you come on up and accept the proclamation? All right, up next, we have a real treat for everybody. We have the Youth Advisory Committee Annual Presentation. So why don't you come on up and introduce yourselves and tell us what you're all about?
Hello, everyone, my name is Sebastian Musque. I'm in 11th grade, and I attend Huniparosa High School, and I'm also the president of the Youth Advisory Committee. This committee is comprised of 27 members ranging from 7th grade all the way to 12th grade, and today we have a short presentation prepared for you to just go over what we've been, what we've been up to over the last year. So first, we'll have Alex to talk about teen wellness.
Hello, my name is Alexandria Lowly. I'm a freshman in Westmore High School. I'll be talking about teen wellness. So last spring, we went to San Carlos Youth Center to participate in their teen wellness retreat. The picture on the left is where people have to write down something they hate on plates and to smash them. And on the picture on the right is therapy dogs, and we get to pet them and get to know them.
This past August, we helped out with the garden show. There's me, Samira, and Charlotte checking people in at the front door to the new library community center. In addition to that responsibility, we also moved the larger plants into the community room, set up tables, set up chairs, and also had the opportunity to judge all the wonderful jams and preserves that were submitted during the garden show, which were very delicious. And although the garden show is taking the form of a garden tour this coming August, we still hope to offer our services at that event.
All right, hello, everyone, I'm Avni Rajan. I'm currently the secretary on Yak, and as well as a sophomore at Ocean High School. So I'm here to talk about our role in Day in the Park. As Yak, we're here to set up and take down everything in Day in the Park, and we actually created a sticker contest for voting stickers that promoted voter registration this year.
And Councilmember Frank Kern, I think this is your favorite event because you've actually come to this event the last three years in a row, and not only attended this event, but actually won best pair with your dog Stella and your partner Alan, three years in a row.
Wait a minute, three years in a row?
So we'll give her a hand.
My goodness.
Thank you, Sebastian. Yeah, I just heard it, yeah, there we go, Madison.
This is always a fun event. We hold this every October, and this year, we had Raising Cane's Chicken Fingers set up a table at the event to pass out dog toys and dog treats to the different animals from Brisbane. We also distributed whipped cream pup cups for the pets, and we also handed out candy to the owners. So yeah, and one more time, thank you to Frank Kern for being such a wonderful support of our costume contest, so thank you.
Absolutely.
I'll be talking about the Festival of Lights. It's where we help out prepare, light up the necklaces, pass out cookies, hot chocolate, and family and friends to hang out, then like lastly, we light up the tree.
Alrighty, next, we have Senior Tech. So Senior Tech is actually an event that was created by Brisbane last year, and it's actually inspired other Yaks in other cities to create events like this. So we host Senior Tech once a month, and it's a set time where seniors can come to us with any technological issues that they have. This can range from just turning on a ringer all the way to restarting a Chromebook or a computer. I've even had to create someone's Facebook account once, but it's a good way to bridge the gap between the generations and bring our community even closer together.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lily, and I'm a junior at Lake Wilmering High School. This is my first year being a part of Yak, and one of the initiatives that I started at the end, since the end of this year, is the music passion project at the Senior Center. After noticing that many seniors spend time in our community alone, I felt inspired to get back to the community. And by sharing something like deeply meaningful to me, which is music, with my 10 years of piano experience, I formed a youth orchestral band composed of students from across Brisbane, and together we perform at the Senior Center. For example, around the holidays, we played live Christmas music, and when the audience sang along to our final piece, "We wish you a Merry Christmas," I felt like the power of using music to connect people together, and the joy and warmth on the seniors' faces after each performance just reminded me how a small act can make a big difference. And currently, we perform at the Senior Center, the Sunrise Room over there, but our goal is to eventually move some of our concerts in the Mission Blue Drive Center, where people of all ages from Brisbane can come here and listen to us and play music. Our next performance is on May 23rd, so feel free to stop by, it's at the Senior Center, and thank you so much.
What time is the performance?
4:45 p.m.
4:45, okay.
Hello, everybody. My name is Orion Nyam. I am the current vice president of the Youth Advisory Committee. Annually, we have the opportunity to hold two dances for middle schoolers, one in the fall and one in the spring, having an average of at least 85 members. There, students have the ability to take photos using our photo booth, making and just make unforgettable memories there.
Hello, everyone, my name is Reyna Okendo. I'm an 8th grader at Lubin Middle School, and I am the Associate Representative of Yak. Teen nights are held once a month on Wednesdays, and they are a great opportunity for our youth to play games, enjoy free food, hang out, and have fun. We have events such as Nintendo Smash Bros., Mario Kart, and Just Dance competitions, as well as board game nights.
And last fall, we went to the Los Altos Community Center with other Yaks such as Palo Alto and Burlingame, and just other Yaks around the peninsula. There, we exchanged ideas, participated in team-building activities, and we got to discuss our ideas and inspire other Yaks.
And just this past month, we attended the California Youth Commission Conference through the CYAC. This was an amazing, well-put-together event, and we had amazing guest speakers such as California Attorney General Rob Bonta and our very own California Senator Kevin Mullen. We talked about state policy and how that affects the youth today, and looking into next year, we hope to take a more active role in the planning and also hopefully leading a session with the other youth groups from around the Bay Area, speaking about state policy and how we can make a role in our community. And lastly, just the last three initiatives that we'd like to talk about are the Youth Storytellers Club. Unfortunately, our associate cannot be here tonight, Samira Nakajima, Nakajime, excuse me, and this is a fun club where people who are passionate about creative writing and storytelling can meet, share their stories, and it's open to all ages. And in May, as we talked about earlier tonight, it is Mental Health Month, and Yak will support Mental Health Month initiatives by assisting with the walk around Crocker Park, which will take place next Saturday. We also plan on bringing therapy dogs to a farmer's market and also creating content for social media. And lastly, we are starting teen sports nights in addition to the game nights we have at the Sunrise Center, and on May 14th, we will hold a basketball night at the basketball courts, and on June 11th, we will have a kickball game at Lubin Field, so if you have any friends or kids or nieces or nephews, bring it by May 14th, June 11th, we plan on all being there and having a lot of fun and building a stronger community. And lastly, we'd like to give a very special thank you to our coordinator, Sarah. She does a lot of the work behind the scenes and encourages us to get involved and be the best versions of ourselves in the Brisbane community. So if you have any questions, we can take them now.
Yeah, yeah, I know, that was fantastic. So any questions or comments?
Is there a program that you have all been discussing or wanting to do that you don't have the resources to implement, or that you haven't, you know, figured out how to add it to your list of events or programs yet?
Well, we definitely have one thing in the works. We have been talking a lot about senior engagement, so as Lily mentioned, the senior music, and as Avani mentioned, the senior tech, we really like working collaboratively and closely with the seniors. So we're working on making a senior newsletter, which is written by us, aimed at the seniors, give them something fun to do, and just build that more of a relationship between the younger and more senior generations, but we do have the resources for that, so I think if anything arises, we will let you know, but I feel like we're very well-equipped to do what we'd like to do within the Yak. Sure.
I guess for the senior music, I just don't know how to get in touch with people like that work at Mission Blue Drive that we can like perform at the place, so.
So instead of like at the Sunrise Room, you would like to perform at Mission Blue?
Yeah.
Okay, we can figure that out.
Great.
This is a question for staff, I know we had the young adult survey. Remind me the ages, what is it, like to like 24, 16 to 24? So I know you guys, you know, are on the younger end of that, but is your committee going to review or weigh in on the results of that survey? Do you know, have you discussed it yet?
We've not been made aware, or we've been made aware but not discussed reviewing the findings of teen surveys, but that could be something that we could potentially be interested in if that opportunity arises.
Cool. Yeah, I'm sure that from the survey, there'll be feedback that then you all could weigh in on and give us guidance on, you know, if there are certain programs based on what comes out of the survey, you could be a big part in helping to develop whatever that may be, so.
Definitely, that'd be very valuable.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Terry?
No questions, just want to say thank you for being involved and advocates for your community. It's really important, and it sets a good tone for your future development and our future development, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to applaud everything you've done. I've heard so many good things about all the different initiatives you've already undertaken. I'd like to ask for you to maybe consider something that you might do in a territory you haven't explored, and that might be working with the Idea Committee. We're all concerned about people feeling isolated, angry, they're afraid, and I think hearing from not just adults, but hearing from youth and your perspectives, and actually engaging more youth in Brisbane to join that, maybe some type of event, if you would please consider exploring that, because, you know, you're never too old to learn from young people, and I believe that. So I'd like to hear more of what's on your minds, but we need to establish some sort of event to make that happen. So if you consider that, I'd appreciate it, and thank you for all you do.
Definitely, thank you.
The front row here can't see Sarah's face, but she's over here, she's just beaming Sarah, our recreation coordinator, so, and I agree with her. I want to thank you guys for everything that you do. I've worked with you for the past couple of years, and you are an unstoppable force. I love when you come to give presentations because you wrap up your presentation, and I just stare and say, that's all they do, right there, that's all they do. I love when you come to give presentations because you wrap up your presentation and I just stare and say, that's all they do, right there. That's all they do, that massive list of stuff. So uh, thank you so much for everything that you do and your commitment to the city of Brisbane.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, you, you know, just like what Councilmember Kern said, commitment. Yeah, I've seen several of you for quite a few years and you could tell that it's sincere. You're doing this because you really want to give back to the community and you're excited and, and, and it shows. And you're making a difference. And not only in our community at this moment in time, but you're, you're setting yourselves up later in the future to be someone who comes back, maybe runs for City Council or gets on one of the committees or commissions. So just thank you so much for everything that you do and, you know, let's give it up, this whole room, let's, let's give it up to the Yak. Alright, so let's do a, a group photo with the council and Ingrid, you will do the honors. Okay. Right there and we'll get in tight.
That's okay. Which camera do we look at?
Alright, moving on to oral communications number one. This is an opportunity for anyone who wants to bring up a matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Here's your opportunity. I don't have any slips, but you can raise a hand. Anyone out there? Anyone online? I don't see anyone with a hand raised. So we will move on to the consent calendar. Items E through J. If we don't have anyone willing to take an item off the consent calendar, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve consent calendar items E through J.
Okay, I'll have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And right along to new business. Item K, receive update from Silver Spot Cooperative Nursery School and discuss lease. So, staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Lentz, members of the council. It's great to see so many members of the Silver Spot community here tonight. Thanks for coming. Uh, as the council knows per the packet, the uh, current lease for Silver Spot is up. It's been up for some time. They've been on month to month. And staff has been working diligently with Silver Spot to produce the draft that is in front of you tonight. Given that it's been some time since we've had the draft, uh, we thought it would be a great opportunity for Silver Spot to come in and provide an update on how things are going. And they do have a presentation. I believe that Diana G is going to uh, make that presentation. I did want to point out a couple of omissions and errors in the report and I want to apologize about those. There are two excuse me, two uh, areas to point out on page forty. Um, the second to last paragraph, it should have stated an annual city contribution of thirty-five thousand dollars, not one time. And then on page forty-one, at the bottom, in fiscal impact, while that statement is technically correct, typically the base amount for three hundred and ten dollars has not been charged and it's been instead uh, Silver Spot has offered tuition assistance. So that's not, we don't typically receive that, those funds. Uh, finally, there was an omission as it related to an attachment and that was primarily documents from a staff report uh, last year to the Infrastructure and Facilities Subcommittee. Um, those were provided to the council today and there's copies of those um, outside, if anyone would like a hard copy. Uh, with that, I'd like to invite Diana to come up to give a presentation. Oh, great. Hi, Carl.
Good evening, council members. My name is Diana G and I am the current teacher director at Silver Spot Nursery School. I am also an alumni family of the school. My son Alex attended Silver Spot in the first year, starting in two thousand and three. Our family enrolled for three years and during that time, I was a board member for two years. I am in my nineteenth year of teaching in early childhood education and have been director at Silver Spot since two thousand and twenty. And I'd like to introduce our Board of Directors, who will have a presentation for you. Um, I'm gonna start with Tom, who's our board president.
Hello, hello, everybody. Um, I'm Tom Faust. I'm, uh, this year is board president. Uh, second year, uh, Silver Spot member, second year on the board. Um, as most people here probably know, Silver Spot is a cooperative school for young children following the Reggio Emilia philosophy on early childhood education. Um, this is an old institution here in Brisbane, uh, founded in two thousand and one. Um, which has both served and helped build our community over the years. Uh, we are a five oh one C three nonprofit, having a great partnership with the city and city institutions. Um, let's go forward one slide if we can. No. This way. No. This, this button? You're gonna drive it? Okay, you can drive. Okay, great. I'll just, I'll just do the next slide. Great. As it says here, we're licensed by California Department of Social Services, affiliated with California Council of Parent Participation Nursery Schools. Um, we are a nonprofit cooperative preschool. Um, we're parent-run and organized. Um, as I think the entire board is here tonight and we, once a month, hold meetings not that dissimilar from this one, where we organize, discuss, and vote on issues pertaining to the school. And uh, you know, in, in recent years, that has uh, you know, been to adapt to changing circumstances as, as things go. So can we, next slide, please? Um, so what does, I guess a co-op mean? What does it, what, what does it look like? Um, uh, the nuts and bolts of it. It's, it's parent participation in the normal school programming that includes during the day, um, you know, classroom aides, you know, parents or family members will be part of the, of running the classrooms and cleaning the classroom. Each family has a job, could be, you know, gardener, uh, could be website maintenance, could be librarian. Um, like I said, we have a parent-run Board of Directors. Uh, in the tiny text that you can see on the right-hand side of the slide, we have our, uh, you know, next year's uh, fall program for, you know, the different slots, full-time, part-time. Uh, we try to be pretty flexible to kind of serve the needs of the community. So those who will want, you know, like the maximum number of hours would be, you know, eight A M. to five P M. Um, but some families will choose only, you know, mornings or only afternoons, et cetera. Um, some other pieces, like as per the lease, which we've discussed, we are obligated to provide tuition assistance to families in need. This allows us to better serve our community. Um, our kind of board and community kind of feeds into the Bris- like the Brisbane civic life. Carl, you can correct me, but I think all current members of, of B E S P T O are former Silver Spot members or?
Almost.
Almost? Okay. Yeah, yeah. Um, uh, this is odd, but we are, we're the only childcare center in Brisbane, uh, or in the Brisbane School District that uh, accepts children in diapers. Um, and recent families include children with uh, with autism, which research shows greatly benefit from increased socialization um, around other children their age, other, other uh, people. And uh, and include flexibility in terms of, of um, you know, hours, pay, schedule, needs of children to better accommodate community. We'll go to the next slide and I'll introduce um, the president-elect, uh, current Vice President, Jessica.
Thank you, Tom. Hi, everyone. I'm Jessica, uh, Vice President currently for Silver Spot Board. I'd like to thank you again for this opportunity to discuss our lease. Um, we are looking forward to getting that signed, of course. Um, so I have been at Silver Spot now for about two years. My, my first child, Jace, is now in kindergarten at B E S. And like he said, the P T O is calling me because they want me on the P T O board. Um, so excited to get into that, involved with that as well. Um, and now I have Mia, who is two and a half, who started uh, Silver Spot at two years old and she is thriving. She loves it and I love that, that we now offer um, care for younger children. And we'll go into that a little bit later. So this slide here.
Hold on, your mic is off. Wait.
Hello?
No.
Hello? There we go. Uh, so this first slide offers a snapshot of our enrollment and schedules for the upcoming, um, or for this past year for two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. We have a total enrollment of about twenty students, representing twenty families within our community. We are proud to serve a diverse group. Um, with fifteen of our students being Brisbane residents, we also support families where a parent is employed in Brisbane. So that's fourteen total who live here and then one who, who uh, works here. In Brisbane, we also support families where a parent, um, no, I'm sorry. Additionally, we welcome four students from neighboring San Francisco communities demonstrating our broader, broader regional impact. Furthermore, uh, Silver Spot is committed to accessibility. We currently provide tuition assistance to three families totaling a subsidy of one thousand fifty per month. We also have additional funds set aside to ensure ongoing financial support is available to those who need it. Um, you can go ahead to the next slide. So in this slide, um, we, we're showing that we've made some changes to meet the needs of our community. We have changed some of our um, hours here and we have changed um, our model to to join some of the non-participating families. We have up to five families that can attend Silver Spot without participating. So that means, you know, some families don't have, um, they don't, they're not able to come in and work in the classroom because they work that nine to five, Monday through Friday. But they are able to join our membership meetings. They are able to join our fundraising events. Um, and everything else revolved around the co-op model. They just can't work in the classroom. So we've changed our model a little bit for them to be able to join and not have to do those classroom shifts. They just pay a little bit of more money so we can make sure to hire enough staff to cover those shifts. Um, we have reduced the new student minimum age to two years old by uh, January first. It used to be you have to be two years old by August. So that helped me out a lot. I started uh, a new job and my daughter just turned two years old in November. And I was looking for somewhere with daycare, close to home. I mean, I'm able to walk to Silver Spot from my house. And it is so convenient. And nowhere else in, in Brisbane changes diapers or has the flexibility or offers that opportunity for me to pop in and see my daughter playing in the classroom. Um, we've also changed our hours. Previously, we were nine A M. to four P M. Um, and as the board, we made that decision that parents do need, they work longer hours, right? Your regular work hours are usually nine to five or eight to four. Um, so we worked with our teachers and our board to approve those new hours and it has worked out tremendously. Um, and then we're working with our community. We're, we're doing more fundraising. We have our wonderful fundraiser here, Nina, who has worked effortlessly and put in so many hours just to um, get Brisbane more involved in, in uh, Silver Spot. So I'd like to introduce her for our next slides.
Oh, I'm sorry, you guys. I'm Crystal Nixon. Um, I am uh, a second uh, go-around at Silver Spot. My son started it in twenty twenty-one and now my daughter, who is two and a half, uh, started this year. Um, this is my uh, third year on the board. Um, I committed to Diana that I would stay here for five years, even though I didn't have a student there for a year and a half of it. Um, just because I love this school so much and um, I would put in any, any effort necessary to keep things running smoothly.
Yes. Thank you, council members. I'm Carl Lamb. Uh, I grew up in Brisbane and three of my children have gone or uh, my last one is currently wrapping up, uh, graduating this year at Silver Spot and I'm a very proud parent of uh, you know, children that have gone to Silver Spot. And uh, also wanted to recognize, I saw in the crowd here a lot of, um, you know, even the legend, Tom Wheeler, the director that uh, you know, created Silver Spot is here. And uh, you know, Teacher Melissa I see here, uh, I still call her Teacher Melissa, but she tells me, don't, don't call her that anymore. Uh, you know, and alumni members. So I wanted to recognize them to, you know, participate and help support us on this topic too. Um, I'll start, Crystal, and then you can chime in. So essentially, there's a reason why there's two treasures. Uh, of course, we represent, uh, you know, there's H R, you know, we're running this as a business too. It's a nonprofit. We're not making a huge amount of money. We're, you know, nonprofits supporting the community. Uh, but you know, it's basically H R, taxes, payroll, um, sometimes bookkeeping, legal issues, you know, QuickBooks, all, all those things, right? So there's, there's a lot of work. And of course, with a parent-run community, we're just kind of uh, chipping in with our hours to support the school. Um, to summarize kind of the key things, uh, there's a few things I'll mention and maybe Crystal can chime in. Uh, with respect to the revenue streams, there's key things that are, uh, you know, just tuition, fundraising, uh, grants which keep the school, you know, ongoing, uh, in terms of positive. Of course, uh, there's expenses which are, uh, operating expenses that we have, includes salaries, uh, staff, staff-related, um, insurance, maintenance, utilities, operations, which we have, we need uh, to operate the school. Um, with respect to um, you know, I think the last three years, I, I just wanted to mention, uh, was kind of coming back from COVID, kind of bouncing back. Uh, you know, we had some restrictions on head count and number of students we can take. So we were kind of coming back from a, a bit of a turbulent time, a very difficult time for the school. So we're kind of coming back from that. I, and that's why we approached, uh, the City Council, uh, you know, maybe eight or nine months ago to kind of discuss, uh, you know, support. But I think the other key message I wanted to make as a treasure, uh, is that we're now, because of a increased enrollment and kind of updating our model a little bit with what Jessica mentioned, um, we're actually in a very good state right now. I mean, again, we're not making a huge amount of money, which is not our intention. Uh, but we're in a, a good, strong financial state. So, um, yeah, Crystal, you want to go? Anything you want to add? Good. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Um, so yes, my name's Nina. My son, Amir, um, attends Silver Spot now in his second year. And he's um, definitely thriving there. And this is my first year finishing out as a fundraiser. Um, and like most of our board members, been re-nominated for these roles for our next school year, which is exciting. Um, I'd just like to say, I think overall, Silver Spot has been one of the, the best kind of adulting experiences outside of becoming an apparent. Um, moving into Brisbane a few years ago with a young child, um, trying to kind of find that new normal. Um, Silver Spot definitely gave me a foundation um, to thrive off of. And so I really just appreciate the opportunity every day that he gets to go to school there and be a part of this kind of community within our community. Um, regarding our fundraising and community events, as of now, um, Silver Spot has raised um, just over sixty-seven hundred dollars in this past year. And our top three fundraisers would be our Pancake Breakfast, um, our Touch a Truck, and um, I'm sorry, I said three, right? Oh, Festival of Lights is, is what's not, not noted on here. But we did um, Beer and Wine for an adult area at Festival of Lights. And all of these events, you know, we successfully collaborated with Brisbane's Park and Rec, um, Police Department, uh, Public Works. And I just really valued, you know, learning and meeting those people and engaging in my community in ways that I typically wouldn't have unless I was in this role. Uh, so it's very eye-opening to certain procedures and um, paperwork. How to, how to get permits, you know, um, how to apply for venues, which is one of the things I heard the Yak students talking about at Mission Blue. And I'm like, oh, they need to talk, they need to talk to Nicole. I'm like, you know, in my head, it's just like, okay, you know, that's, and that's another thing we'd like to partner with them as well. I think we could do. I think we could do some good concepts, um, with that team. They seem pretty ready to go. So personally, one concept that I really enjoy about our fundraising is our lemonade stand that we started last year. It wasn't something, um, previously that our school had done. Um, we, we basically would do a pop-up in the Brisbane Community Park, uh, on a farmer's market day and it would be just a donation-based, you know, mixed family mixer, lemonade stand in the community and it really gave us an opportunity to get out in the community and meet people and see people, um, you know, not necessarily promote our school, but provide information about it and have a face to Silver Spot. Myself, I learned about Silver Spot at the Brisbane Community Park from one of our other moms here, who is our secretary. I had no idea that Silver Spot was even here, being a new parent in town. Um, so I really just came back to that and it resonated with me about, um, the park being a great place to just see alumni families, um, meet new families and obviously give us an opportunity to fundraise. But really, it was just that community aspect, um, that we, we really enjoy.
And the kids make the lemonade.
Yes, they do, with parent supervision.
Thank you for clarifying.
So we can actually go to the next slide, please. Um, moving into summer, we will, um, host our annual trikeathon, which is a really big fundraiser for our school and it's a lot of fun for our kids. Um, it's really what it sounds like. Our kids ride their trikes around the tot lot, um, they do laps and it's a very marathon race fun-oriented, uh, situation and the whole community is invited. You know, we extend this invite and this event to everyone to come and, and cheer our kids on and we have, um, typically like a family potluck, community event afterwards where we celebrate, you know, these wins, right, of their laps. It just, it just really, you know, ties the whole community aspect together for me. But it's, it's honestly one of our biggest fundraising opportunities and last year we, um, earned just over $6,900 with this fundraiser. Previous years, I think it was upwards of $10,000 and that's just our strong membership and alumni, um, spreading the word, you know, about our school and publicizing it, advertising it, helping us, you know, just fundraise in general. Ending out our school year, we're going to do our, um, lemonade stand again and it'll be the week of our summer break. So it gives our community, within this community, a way to get together. Again, just giving, giving the public an opportunity to see us and learn about our school and our model. You know, all of these financial gains help our day-to-day operations, the, the fundraising efforts in the community engagement efforts, like we receive so much great feedback about these events and excitement when we have new events coming up, um, that we just generally look forward to, to next year's opportunities. So I just wanted to say thank you guys for taking the time to review it.
Thank you, Nina.
Thank you, Nina. Thank you, guys. My name is Mariana. I am the secretary here at Silver Spot. I have been a Brisbane resident now for four years. So I'm just going to do some concluding remarks. So we are in such a better space now than when I first started, uh, and when I first started being a board member. I remember sitting in that first board meeting thinking, wow, what are we going to do? What are the new ideas that we're going to have to come up with to survive? We have so many, we have built so many partnerships. Nina has been great, um, and just giving back to the community and showing who Silver Spot is. We don't just think about Silver Spot, we think about the whole community. We appreciate your guys' love of the city of Brisbane, giving us like the, uh, Mission Blue Center, letting us be at the farmer's market and things like that. We're thinking about future ideas, definitely with Yak. I think they're great. I had never heard of them talk. I've seen them in the, in the community, but it was great to see them being so young and giving back to the community as well. For me personally, I found Silver Spot because I was a stay-at-home mom. It was time for me to go back to work because living here in the Bay Area, it's pretty expensive. And, um, I was doing some research. I would pass by Silver Spot, go to the park and I was like, let me do some research. Finally, I seen that it was a co-op. I'm like, what the heck is a co-op? And I started looking into it and I, when my daughter was young, I was like, maybe I should just continue to be a stay-at-home mom and homeschool. It was not something that I could do because I had to go back to work, but then I found Silver Spot co-op. I can still be involved in her classroom. I can still be involved in her learning and her being a teacher there a little bit. And it really gave me the opportunity to be involved with her and other kids as well. It's made me a better parent, learning how to deal with different kids, different temperaments and things like that. I've built a village with these people, um, that I hope to, you know, have my kids go to elementary, high school, middle school, eventually college. So yeah, I really appreciate you guys and thank you so much for having us.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, uh, before the council begins, um, asking questions, I wanted to let you know that Noren Leek, Parks and Rec Director, is joining us remotely to answer any specific questions related to the lease.
Thank you very much for that. All right. So any other members of Silver Spot would like to speak? Okay, Melissa, that's right. Former teacher at Silver Spot.
You can just call me teacher Melissa.
But you know what? You know what? Actually, just to do the proper protocol. Because you are a, a member of the public now. So I'll, I'll have folks from the public come on up. So, um, if you guys are... Okay, great, great. So then, you know, I'd like to open it up to the council, if they have any questions for staff or for board members, I, I think now would be a good opportunity and then we'll bring in the public. So, uh, Colleen, would you like to?
I always go first. Someone else gets to go first.
Okay. So, uh, Terry, would you like to start?
Sure. And, and this is for staff on page, I want to say 40. Let me go back and see if my memory is serving me correct. Not on this. In the lease. I dog-eared the page. There we go. Page 47 in the lease. Under section 8.01 and section 8.02 under repairs and maintenance. This is not clear to me. I think the lease is poorly worded because it doesn't, it, it counter dicks itself. Can staff give any, um, clarification on what these two paragraphs actually mean?
Sure, I'll do my best attempt through the chair. How, uh, I believe staff has interpreted, uh, sections 8.01 and 8.02 are as follows. 8.01 are essentially interior repairs or small repairs and 8.02 are, uh, exterior repairs, repairs to the structure of the building and any major, um, mechanical or, or electrical system replacement. So the distinction is in the, the level of investment. Per a conversation that we had earlier, happy to, to clarify that per the council's, uh, direction, should that be necessary? Thanks.
Okay, I, I, I think that if we're looking at a lease that, for me, it shouldn't be ambiguous. It should be clear and no one should have to interpret the lease. We don't want to employ lawyers to figure it out after the fact. Thank you. I did late this afternoon at five o'clock get the additional information, um, and, and had a brief chance to review it as far as what was missing from our packets. It's good to have that information that relates to what the conditions of the lease are and to have not had that prior, you know, it made it a little difficult to really, organize my thoughts on how I wanted to approach this particular document. But those are really the only questions I have for staff at this moment. Thank you.
Madison?
Yeah, I have quite a few ton, oh, quite, quite a few questions. And the big one is for me around capacity. And Tom's here tonight and he has that institutional knowledge. So I think capacity and the enrollment number that's listed in the lease of 20, I think, are intimately tied together, but I don't know that for sure. Do you remember, Tom, why 20 was the magic number? If you can come up.
If you might come to the podium, Tom.
You won't be picked up online.
We'll hear you, but no one else will.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. My understanding was that when the school started at the very beginning, that the city wanted to make sure that we had a capacity of a minimum of 20. Our projection at the time was that we were going to be, uh, serving somewhere between 35 to 40, uh, families, which is what we maintained most of the time up until, well, the first couple of years, we had to build up to, um, uh, a capacity. Uh, but I would say by about the third year, we had 35 and up, uh, and maintained that until COVID. Then COVID came in with specific, um, protocols that meant we had to reduce the classroom down to 12. So we had to, you know, and, uh, we had a mix of full-time and, um, part-time families. The way that we were able to have 35 to 40 was serving a number of families that wanted part-time care, didn't want full-time care. Now, what I noticed over a 20-year period, uh, with families coming into Brisbane was that, um, the number, when we first started the school, more families wanted part-time. There was, there would be a few families that adamantly wanted full-time. But, but most families wanted, wanted part-time. That started shifting, oh, I don't know, 2010, something like that, uh, and has been through, you know, an ongoing thing. So I think that when the numbers got reduced, the way that they solved the problem, uh, Diana would be able to answer this better, but, um, was to insist on having full-time families so they could full, fill out the schedule, um, but it reduced the number of families. Now, it took them a while to go from 12 to building it back up to 20 now. And they've also had to rejigger their schedule some, so it makes it harder for the, uh, to have the balance of, uh, part-time to full-time. But, I mean, theoretically, they could move back that direction depending on demand at the school. I mean, that's another thing is the, um, parent co-op model provides a fair amount of flexibility over the long term because as, as things change in the community, uh, parents who are experiencing their, their needs at, you know, at the school, uh, on the board and in the community.
Recording in progress.
Are going to be asking for, for things and, um, it's the parent's responsibility to reorganize when those needs need to be met.
Thank you.
Is that, you have any more?
No, I, I theorized that 20 was the number because it was 50% of, I think, capacity. And in one of these documents, it says that that is what the capacity was. And so, um, I just kind of wanted to get a sense from you.
So the capacity is, um, 24, um, but when we first started the school, it was basically two programs. We had a morning program and an afternoon program because there wasn't a lot of need for full-time care. But right now, with my 20 families, 12 of them are full-time. So I can't, I can't have 20 in the morning and 20 in the afternoon. So we would never be at a 40 capacity again because I have to take those kids who are coming from eight to five and I have to count them twice, basically. So the capacity is 24 and that's what we're licensed for. I couldn't ever have like 40 kids at one time.
Right, right. Well, you have to have your ratio.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you could have 20, because when I was there, so for those who don't know, I used to work at Silver Spot. So, um, Silver Spot was my first job and I started at working, babysitting for the monthly meetings in the office. And then I graduated high school and I started working for parents. And then I started working for the school to fill in places. And I worked for, I worked at Silver Spot maybe five years or more, but I ended up babysitting for 30 families in town, you know, was a really great source of clients. And so I was at Silver Spot during that time when we would have 20 students in the morning session, a teacher and three teachers aides, which is what I was, and, or, or teachers aide parents. And then in the afternoon session, we would have, you know, um, the same amount again. And usually afternoon, we would have a little bit, it wasn't as popular. We'd have a little bit less.
There's another factor here is, is that, um, the, uh, the 20 was self-imposed. We were always licensed for 24 from the very beginning. And there's a difference between the racial for co-op and a racial for a teacher-directed program without, um, the co-op model. When we were very first starting the school, the person from, we had a, uh, someone who was consulting us from, um, licensing, a program that got, uh, suspended halfway through, uh, when Schwarzenegger was elected. But, um, anyway, um, when we first started, we had this, uh, person who was saying licensed for 24 because if the co-op model becomes untenable for any reason, you can then, you'll then be already licensed to switch over to the teacher-run, uh, thing. So that was, that was the reason for the, uh, the 24, but we never, well, we started with the 20 in the, in the, in the classroom.
So you can go up to a six to one ratio? Is that how you're, how, how, how would you do it at 24?
One to five.
Right. Okay. So...
In a normal preschool where there, it's not a co-op model and we don't have parents working in the classroom, then the ratio is, um, one to 12 for a teacher.
Oh, okay. That's how you, that's the numbers. Okay, this is really enlightening. Thank you. So, so what's the rationale for 15? Cause at 20, if we, like, back then, right? There was a lot more families and while, you know, they were half and half, there was a lot more hands to go around to do all of the fundraising, the cleaning and every, so, I imagine that that's now a challenge, but if you can only have a max of 24, but really it's somewhere around 20 in the co-op model, then it's like 15...
We, we put that, um, we wanted to amend that part of that lease is because there's going to be many times where we're not going to meet that 20 and to, we don't, we don't ever want to be in default of our lease.
Right.
Right? And we know because we had such difficult years in the past, coming out of COVID, we know that our minimum to make sure that school is running is 14. And we did it last year with 14 families. We had a full board, we did all our fundraising, we still managed to raise 6,900 on a trikeathon with 14 families. That's huge. So we know we can still run it, we can provide a service to this community. And so we thought if we can have that, the language changed in that lease so that we wouldn't ever feel like we are in default of a lease.
Yeah. Because as a co-op, your maximum then really is 20, so.
Yeah.
Just one last family then already, so the conditions have changed then.
Right. And because our model changed and our pricing has changed, uh, the needs of the community has changed, we know with the tuition that we collect from the 15 families, we can still survive.
Great. That, those are all my questions.
All right, great. Frank?
Thank you so much. Uh, I had some questions around capacity too, so that really helped out, um, because I was seeing back in, in one of the older documents here dated 2013 that we had 38 families, but it sounds like it was a blend of full-time and part-time. So that's great. Thank you so much. I guess, I don't have too many questions, uh, tonight. We did get some of the materials pretty late, but I was, uh, going through the lease earlier today and I guess I just have a question for Tom of all people. So Tom, I'm looking at section, uh, it's item K, page 43, um, section under article three, rent waiver of rent. We've got two, uh, two components of this here, 3.01. It says, uh, you know, uh, if, uh, the landlord shall waive the payment of the monthly rent if there's a direct benefit to the Brisbane community and then 3.02 goes into a deeper discussion on that's solely for tuition, uh, assistance. Wondering, Tom, on the go-forward, if we could maybe expand this to include some sort of marketing effort, um, for... um, for, uh, finding additional, uh, families should, at some point in the future, Silver Spot need help, uh, with recruitment. It seems like they're doing a bang-up job on fundraising and, um, everything to be inclusive with the city of Brisbane. But at some point, if we wanted to help out as a city, uh, for marketing to find additional families, um, is that something that we might be able to include? I'm not requesting that, I'm asking, is that something we might be able to include here?
Tom, City Attorney, or Tom in the room?
Tom, City Attorney.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, well, also-
And then one on lawn.
Actually, I'll take the opinion of any Tom at this point. No, Tom, City Attorney. Thoughts on that?
So casual tonight, yes.
Yeah, the word would have to, uh, that, the wording would have to be agreed between the parties, but the, the concept is fine.
Great, thank you.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
I would see, think that adding, um, terms to the lease that we help with fundraising, it doesn't-
Not fundraising, not fundraising. Marketing and recruitment.
I think that that doesn't belong in a lease. That we're going, that's something that the city would do as a supportive measure, but I don't believe it should be included in a lease. It's a lease agreement, I, I, and again, this is something maybe we want to talk about in closed session about terms of a lease when it gets to that. Um, but I don't think that, um, including that kind of language would really be appropriate. And maybe we're in questions and I'm in discussions, so I'll stop.
Unless you had a question for staff, you know, or Tom, it, you, it sounds like you have a question, so just ask it.
Okay, let's put it as a question. Tom, is the city having a responsibility to include, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Um, support for outreach be something that would be appropriate in a lease?
Yeah, it, it can be done. The leases take many, many forms. It's also common to just have some call them a framework agreement. Um, it's basically a side agreement that gets into that kind of detail and you attach it to the lease. So either can be done.
But it wouldn't necessarily be in the conditions of the lease?
It can be, or it doesn't have to be. It really just, like, council's-
Okay, thank you.
You have any other questions, Frank?
So Tom, um, back to Councilmember O'Connell's question. So then I could literally argue right now that 3.02 does not belong in this lease.
You could.
Yep.
And I think we need it documented somewhere.
Okay. Fair, we can move this, yeah, we can move this in discussion. Thank you.
You can't. At the end of the day, there's, there's essential elements that sometimes folks don't want in the, the debt, the, the lease, or they don't want in a settlement document. Or they, because they think in government that that's gonna shield it from public view if you put it in a side document. In reality, you're attaching the side document to whatever it is, uh, that is the main agreement. So one way or the other, it's becoming public. And that's why you start hearing about side agreement. It's an old ruse, uh, that was done for a long time by some cities, not by Brisbane. But if we do it, we'd have to make it public otherwise.
Got it. Thank you. No further questions.
Calling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, um, to everyone who came tonight. Um, I also was greatly encouraged, you have a lot of alumni that wrote us plenty of emails. So I think you've reinstilled the interest in the community and that's good to see. So I'm gonna start with a question for staff. I have a, a paper that came from a subcommittee meeting last fall. And again, we're going back to terms in the lease since that's come up. The paper that I had for staff report last fall indicated that water and sewer was paid by the city. And yet the lease shows utilities being paid by the tenant. Do we know which is correct?
Uh, thank you. Through the chair, the information that I shared this afternoon was from staff-related. Uh, we've looked at, uh, our accounts and we are showing that we're paying, uh, those utilities. It could be a question for, for Silver Spot as well, but that's what our, that's what our records show.
Okay, so Article 6 in this lease should reflect what actually is incumbent upon the tenant and what's the responsibility of the city, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So last fall, we had a meeting with a couple of board members and, you know, I remember when Silver Spot was started, cause I was very excited. We donated a stove, we wanted to help you all get off the ground. And it was really exciting to see the community get so excited about this as an institution. So it was very disheartening last fall when we met with a couple of your board members and they were talking about real hardship. And I understand it, city had great hardship coming out of COVID, a lot of businesses had hardship. A lot of things have never gone back to what we called normal before. So I have some questions related to conversations we had last fall, some things that, that your board had brought up. One of the thing, one of the things that were brought up was that there was a concern about losing nine kids due to TK starting in 2025. Could someone address that? Is that still an issue?
Yes, we, it's not a big issue. We are, um, definitely graduating kids going into TK. We are gonna graduate, uh, one, two, three, seven kids. And out of those seven, three are going to TK.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
We're still recording in progress. And we also had talked about the model, which is the co-op. And kind of your board was a little split. Some felt co-op was no longer viable and some felt it should continue. And so we had a little discussion about marketing. So one thing that's really encouraging is it seems like you've infused with some new blood, perhaps some new parents who are taking on marketing and fundraising. But one other thing that came up, I remember asking you if you had looked into the California State preschool program. Has anyone looked into that?
As in like 4Cs, things like that?
No, this is a-
The actual-
It, it, it's a, it's a state program, has state funding. And there are, um, preschools in every city. They're given for low income, they're designated that city's preschool and they're given state funding. And so I'd recommend that someone look into that because you-
But I believe a co-op model does not fit that need. No, yeah.
Yeah.
Which, which- You have to come- Transition to that option? Sorry. Are, are you saying, um, a, that was a suggestion for us to look into that as an option for our school?
Only because it could provide you with additional revenues. The fact that there's no preschool or co-op, or it comes under childcare preschool, there's co-ops. That could be a source of additional funding for you. It's administered by the state and then there are cities in the peninsula. There's a whole list of cities and conspicuously Brisbane is absent. So it might be something good to look into, cause it could increase your revenues?
I, I think simply we just need to double-check what, what you're referring to cause I don't recall that comment specifically. Um, but Councilmember, um, Mackin, I did want to clarify that, uh, I, I guess at the, at least my, I was part of the meeting, uh, with the city council. And, uh, at the time, it was the start of the season, we came off a really hard year. So we thought to reach out with, with the city to, to kind of discuss, um, you know, kind of the situation with Silver Spot, right? And it was kind of a, a bit of a heart-to-heart discussion with the city. We've been in collaboration with the city for 20 years and we're very, very grateful for the space. But one, one thing I don't think is quite correct is that I, I don't think the parents felt the co-op model doesn't work. Cause I think it's about, uh, participation, community building, being a part of your child's education. I don't think, those are like timeless things, right? I do think there's a fundamental thing with like trying to figure out, al- ultimately it's still a business, right? I mean, we need to be solvent. Like I said earlier, we're not trying to make a ton of money, but we are trying to be solvent. And we were in a difficult spot, but like we kind of conveyed, we are in a better spot. Enrollment's been higher, fundraising, we've been hugely more engaged with the community. Uh, we're, you know, getting our number, so the, the situation has changed nine months since, right? So that's what, what we're trying to convey. But we can certainly follow up with some of the things you're referring to, if we could get more details, so.
I, I think when I mentioned co-op, it was in the, it was in a discussion about, your board was asserting you didn't have enough parents willing to participate. So that made it more difficult, but it sounds like some of that has turned around. So that's what I'm curious, what you've done to turn this in a different direction? Cause it sounds like you've done a lot since we met last fall.
I, I'll speak it. And, yeah, okay. I, I think the key aspects of it was, uh, we have thought carefully about the model, including what we had presented, um, like non-participating families, allowing for, you know, nine-to-five parents, maybe dual, dual-working couples, uh, parents to still participate in the community, right? So those are things we're, we're counting for. The, the schedule has, has changed a bit, right? So there's different things where, which I think has already, uh, with the increase in enrollment reflects like that interest, right, with the community? And it's, like, so far it's been really good, I think, so.
From that meeting in the fall, we have been working really hard with our outreach. Um, we only came, the, the board decided to meet with the, a subcommittee early this fall um, because, like Carl said, we are, we were coming out of a very difficult year. And we didn't want to not share with you guys and not wait till the very last minute and where we couldn't get on with ourselves and we had to have some, some kind of help from the city. Um, so we were just kind of putting it out there to make sure that, um, you guys were aware of what was going on at our school. Um, with every intention of ourselves working and doing the, the job so that we can maintain our school on our own, right? Um, and I think we've shown that we have, um, within a few short months. We're now at 20, we fully enrolled for next school year, we have two people on the waiting list. Um, as, going back to your question about the, um, what was your city, uh, preschool council that you were talking about? I'm not sure about that exact one that you asked us to look into, but we do, and I do remember saying this at that subcommittee meeting. We do belong to, um, 4Cs, which is, um, Childcare Coordinating Council of San Mateo. We've been longstanding with them. We do have, um, a family who comes to us from funds from that. Uh, we do have families who are on a waiting list from that 4Cs council in San Mateo. Um, so we do, we do do things like that.
This is, this is the list, it's subsidized childcare and also preschools.
Yes, so we are on a list and it's to, it's through the San Mateo County 4Cs.
Cause this is California State preschool program, early learning is-
Yeah, we're not on that list, but we are on the 4Cs of San Mateo.
And have you asked them about whether you would be eligible for any funding?
We are eligible, so they are funding one of our families.
Oh, they are?
Yes. And we have families who are on a waiting list for that.
Okay, so they're implementing directly to families, not the school?
Uh, no. It, it's sensitive to the school, right?
It's so-
You get like a voucher or something?
How it works is you have to get accepted into the 4Cs program. So you have to meet the eligibility requirements.
As a family or a, or a-
As a family, as a family. So you get accepted as a family and you choose where you want childcare. Now, some people don't know where they want childcare. They don't know, um, they're like, hey, I live close to Brisbane, do you have any schools you can refer me to? And we are on that list. So if any families are inquiring about a preschool because they don't have anyone or anything in particular, then we're on that list. And so we could get a call saying, hey, we have a family here who is interested in your school. Um, but in our case, the family already knew about the school, they were already a part of the school. And now they are receiving the funds to pay for their tuition from 4Cs.
And, and the significance would be then you're not necessarily having to do tuition waivers, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so those, so the funds that they receive go directly, they pay the school directly.
Okay.
And we do get a lot of, um, calls from 4Cs asking about our vacancies and they do send people to us, but, uh, most of the families who are on, who are looking through the 4Cs of San Mateo, they're not looking for a co-op. They can't do the co-op model, they're looking for a basic preschool, drop-off preschool.
Okay. So last question I had for you, I don't want to take up everyone's time, is you mentioned in your presentation, you wanted to work with the city on some infrastructure updates, totlot and building repairs. What is that? Could someone tell me?
Uh, so, so I think there's different things. Of course, the building has been there since kid, I think kids and things and, yeah, so it's-
Was a rec center before?
Yeah, I mean, there, there's, there's some, it's old building. So I mean, that, that part is more like just making sure the roofing. There's other things that maybe we can work together on like, uh, exterior, you know, uh, coverings and things like that. But I do think the biggest opportunity to work with the city on is, uh, update of the totlot, which is, I think since I was a child, looks about the same.
Can you explain what the totlot is for?
The totlot is currently, for the next 12 days, the only playground in Brisbane. So, um-
It's a city park?
It's for toddlers.
There you go.
And it's, yeah, so it's dated, there's a lot of sun damage on the equipment. Uh, there's other opportunities for us to kind of, uh, I think some of the brainstorm discussion, which I think is where we're, we're talking about is, um, maybe working with the subcommittee, maybe with the facilities, uh, department in Brisbane to work on a, maybe joint grant or I don't know what's actually feasible, uh, but I do think there's a lot of space. There's a large grassy area in the back. Yeah, there's many ideas, so I think that's the whole, whole key idea, to just explore that a bit further. Although from a design standpoint, outside of discussion, we haven't gone that far, uh, outside of our internal board discussions. So we did want to bring this up with the city as an interest area for us.
If, Jeremy, if you could respond, is the totlot part of their lease?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's not.
No, it's actually, uh, through the chair, it's sort of an odd arrangement, um, from a practical perspective because it is a city facility, but because of its proximity to Silver Spot, I think a lot of residents don't know that it's accessible at certain times.
Right, cause, uh, we have a facilities subcommittee on the council that, Councilmember Davis and I, we recently toured Silver Spot and went through to make sure that the building was in good shape. So was there, were there other things having to do with the building that are, that we missed?
Um, I, I mean, I think structurally, it's, it's sound, like there's-
Right.
I, I think historically, if I remember correctly, some of the board members, there's might, might have been some roofing issues, but-
Yes, there was a little bit of a, um, a roofing issue and, um, the facilities, um, team came out and they fixed it, um, during our spring break.
Okay, very good.
And going back to the playground, the totlot, it is a public park, it's never closed. There's a sign that says it's a public park. Um, and for us to use it, our families have to sign a field trip waiver, um, because it's like for us to taking the kids on a field trip every single day when we're playing at the park, cause it's not part of our building. So, and we do get families who join us at the park all the time, so it is, it is an open public park. We never have it closed just for our, our, um, families.
So you're seeking some way to use it that is not so encumbered?
No, I think they just want to update the play structure.
We just need to update the, the playground, the, the structures.
Okay, you're talking about the actual physical part?
The slide, the swing.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, any other council comments, questions? You know, at this time, I don't have any questions, but I, I just, I did want to just thank you for, uh, taking the feedback that myself and Councilmember Mackin had provided when you did meet with us last fall. And obviously through your presentation, you, you listened and, and you've done a lot of work to get yourself to where you are right now. So kudos to you, excellent job. So let's, uh, let's open it up to the public. I have some slips, but Melissa, since you came up first, why don't you come on up? And then, and then we'll go off the slips next.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure if it's even necessary, but I just wanted to reiterate how important Silver Spot is to the city and how it provides a benefit for the city of Brisbane, not only for the children, but also for the families. And that, as I think it was Tom said, the, the families that are involved in the co-op go on to be the, the best-
go on to be the, the best PTO members. They go on to be civically engaged, you know, that it becomes habit forming to be involved in the community. And so I think that, that benefit to the community is a very good argument for renewing their lease and continuing to have the very good deal that they have through the city. And it's not, it's not unique either. There are other co-op nursery schools in San Francisco that have a similar thing, where it's a park and rec building and they use the public playground for their school too. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. All right, up next, Juliana Johnson.
Good evening, council members. I really want to applaud, I, I don't get to these meetings very often, but just your sense of community is really wonderful from all of you and your service. I, my son was in the first class at Silver Spot in 2003. I was part of the board, I think for three or four years and was part of the group that we really worked hard to get it on its feet. But I'm now working with the school district in, in Brisbane. And I just wanted to give you some, just a very small perspective. I see these children coming out of Silver Spot and I see, and I see them coming into the school, our public school. And I, I can watch them. And it's so amazing to see children who are trained in the play-based program that Silver Spot is providing. I had one child just today. I said to him, what did you like about Silver Spot? I think he's in, he's in upper elementary. And he said, oh, he said, well, I love the storytelling. And I said, well, what did, you know, how, what did, what does that do for you? He said, well, I said, how, how does that help you? He said, well, you know, I can write anything. And he said, and I love to read. But when he said I can write anything, he's saying, he was telling stories when he was three and four and five. And that strong base of being able and thinking and knowing that he can tell a story, he can use words, he can express himself. I see going all the way from elementary and I see it through high school and I'm seeing it kids through high school have graduated and in college. And I could name them all, like one at a time. So it's a tremendous program and I really applaud all of your support for this program. And I'd love to see, you know, like if, if they have low numbers, the support of the council because it's, and it's such a community service organization. So thank you and thank you all.
Thank you, Juliana. All right, Jillian Chacon and Sean. So Jillian and Sean, I have a slip here.
Jillian left.
I think she stepped out.
Oh, you know what? R2 and R1 inclusion. I think this is for a different item.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay. So I see that Jessica Aloft is online, she has a hand raised. So Jessica, you're, you're on.
Yeah, hi, hi, everybody. I'm sorry I can't be there in person. I would love to see teacher Tom and teacher Melissa and teacher Diana and director Diana. Anyway, I wanted to thank the city council, this city council and previous city councils for having the vision and foresight to get this program up and running and supported over the last, it sounds like almost 20, 25 years? 20, 25 years? It's a terrific program and as people have mentioned, Juliana mentioned and Melissa mentioned, it's not only schooling these children in an amazing way, it's educating the parents in civic engagement, involvement, leadership. There are parents like myself, Rachel Ennis, Dee Porter, who have gone on to run the best PTO or found the Mission Blue camp. And, you know, I had a hand in running the Mothers of Brisbane for many years. And it just, it gives parents and families a sense of ownership in their community that I don't know how else you learn that when you're struggling to raise a young family. You know, families are thrown in, like you've got to kind of do it, you've got to run the school. And myself and other parents learned so much out of that experience that we carried on throughout our, our lives. So I sent a letter and I think you guys have it, but it was really just restating that and, and tying it back to the YAC. I mean, Sebastian Bousquet is a graduate of Silver Spot. I'm sure there are others on the YAC who are now leaders in their young community because they have those foundational experiences of, you know, being leaders and, and, and having a voice at somewhere like Silver Spot. So I want to thank you all for supporting this program and I hope that you can continue to do so. It's a wonderful example of a public nonprofit partnership. The leveraging of the city dollars that we're getting out of investing in this, in this program at Silver Spot is, is just phenomenal. It's a kind of example of what we should have more of. So I want to thank you for that and I hope you renew the lease and we can move forward.
All right, thank you, Jessica. All right, anyone else out in the audience that would like to come up to the podium? Okay, so. All right, so now we're on to council discussion. So Madison, you want to start?
Sure. Well, first I want to say, obviously having my own personal connection with Silver Spot, I think, you know, colors a lot of my opinions because it was a big part of my life at one point. And now I'm a new mom, so I have a seven-month-old. So it would be one of my childcare options that I would be reviewing. But I, I think that adjustment to 15 students in the lease is reasonable, especially now that we've gotten the capacity ironed out and understanding how the program has shifted, I really needed clarity on that. 20 doesn't make any sense at all because you can lose one student and all of a sudden you're, you're in violation of the lease. And there has to be some room for flexibility there, provided that the structure that you've developed will carry you on financial, like it's a good base financially for you guys to be able to survive. So if that is true, then, and your break-even point is 14, then I think 15 is a reasonable number and I think that should be changed to reflect, be reflected in the lease. The $310 rent is a weird thing that's there because we've never charged the rent. And, and, and you guys have been allocating that to assistance for families. However, I think that that number, that number has never increased over time. And the cost of childcare, the cost of your program, has increased over time. And so, you know, I think, I wasn't on the council then, obviously, but I think that the intention of that council was to say, hey, this is what an amount we would like to see you subsidize students. And so over 20 years later, $310 has a much smaller impact. I know that you're a nonprofit and you've had a tough few years, but I would hope that we could increase that amount and maybe we restructure how it's labeled. But I would like to see a higher number that the school is committing. And whether you're committing, you know, more money on your own, it's great. And I know you guys have done that, but I think it makes sense for it to be spelled out that our expectation is more than 310 and have it written somewhere. And I'm happy to discuss what that number could be. And I think that that's something that you should weigh in on of what you think that you could commit to on an ongoing basis. But I just think $310 is too low. And, you know, this is such an important program to so many people and has really assisted dozens of children, our community hundreds. And so I want to see, you know, this be an affordable childcare option for the families that need it.
So Madison, you know, so you put out that number. So what if we, you know, raised it to say a thousand dollars?
Well, I, I, I don't know what their finances look like. And as somebody who runs a nonprofit for my day job, to just, if somebody were to throw, throw out a number to me.
In their document, I mean, in this, you know, it sounds like they're at 1,080 right now.
If that's something they feel that they could commit to?
I see some nods there, so I mean, that seems good, right? So from 310 up to 1,000. Of course, the council has to, you know, think that's a good increase.
Provided they agree to that number, I think that it's more in alignment with, you know, what I would expect to see in 2025. It's not, I mean, and granted, it's really not that much when you think about the price of childcare. But I would like to have that be more formalized in some way.
Yeah, no, I think, well, just like how we can change 20 children to 15, right? I mean, that's, that's why we're here tonight, to provide direction to staff so that then the contract can be written so that they can finally get a lease because it's been since 2019. And so, but that's, that's, I think that's a really good suggestion. So hopefully the council is, is, is on board with that as well.
In terms of the length of the lease, my, I would, I would like to see two years. I know you're, you're hoping for five. And the reason is because I just think we should revisit this conversation sooner than five years from now, given that the school has had some financial difficulties. And I think that, you know, we have a preschool that's expanding in Brisbane and potentially TK expanding in some way. I think that there are going to be further pressures on Silver Spot. And I would just, I would like us to kind of have another check-in in two years and see how things are going, given those additional pressures that are out of your control. And I think you're trying to mitigate some of that in advance by having children that are two years instead of two and a half. The problem is with the preschool where you, it's, the kids are in and then they're out so fast. And then you need to repopulate the school and get new parents in and new families in. So I would be, I, I would just like to do two years. And then, you know, at that time, if everything is going well, I would be happy to extend the full five then. And I would love to encourage you, I think you were alumni for a period of time that was on the board until your daughter started. And I think that's just, this is my unsolicited free advice, but I think that having alumni on the board or involved on an ongoing basis is really smart. I think you lose so much of that institutional knowledge, all the fundraisers and programs that parents used to have. And I think you lost obviously all of that in the pandemic. And that is something that keeps Silver Spot so healthy is that it's, it's like that oral tradition that you're passing down to the next generation. And so especially because of the way that you've restructured and you're not ever going to have 38 families again, it makes it very difficult to have just a small group of parents who is doing all of the thinking. So I would just encourage you to try to rope in alumni in a way that can maybe act as that institutional knowledge for you going forward. And take, you know, do without what you will, but that's my thought.
Yeah, maybe some fundraising through the chamber.
Mr. Bayer, may I ask a follow-up question? And this is for the entire council. Currently, the lease, I'm on page 43, so this is section 2.02. There is a, a section here that refers to the request for an additional period of time for the lease. Is the suggestion, is there a suggestion or direction to staff related to whether we should retain that? Or would it be just a two-year and then they would come back? What's the preference?
I think, let's have the rest of the council talk about it and then, and then come back. All right, thank you. Frank?
Thank you. And looking at the materials that we've got here, two-year, five-year, I can go either way on that. It sounds like councilperson Davis would like to come back after two years and do a revisit. I'm fine with that. Five years, I'm fine with as well. So I'm, that's not the rock I'm going to die on. We're talking about lease amounts. Any lease amount that has been discussed so far this evening is, I believe, what I would call a token lease amount, meaning whether it's $1, $310 or $1,000, it's still a token amount. And so, again, I think there's some flexibility there. Thank you again for coming tonight, by the way, and, and presenting. I know that you guys are very passionate about this. I just want to make a statement just for purposes of record here. And it's just something I feel pretty passionate about. And these are probably Crystal's words, but I'm reading from the Schedule E of the IRS Form Document 990. These are great words, by the way. And it says, "We haven't used print or broadcast media to solicit families for enrollment. We have distributed our brochures, independent on the word of mouth, and our website." And I just think that, I'm doing a little foreshadowing here, by the way. Later tonight, we're announcing some rebranding of one of our committees. But I think on the go-forward, if there's ever a problem at Silver Spot with, with the funding or the, the, the supply source of new families and new children, I think you should turn to the city of Brisbane and our Economic Development Group. And this is probably something that we can help you with, either through paid search, social media advertising. I mean, we can do things from a procurement standpoint that probably Silver Spot doesn't have access to. So I just wanted to say that for purposes of record, you ever get in a situation like that again, that's something you should come lean on us for. And I think that that is all that I've got on the lease, thank you.
All right, thank you, Frank. Terry?
I'd just like to reiterate that, you know, before we do a final lease approval, and again, with a, a token rent increase, it's not that it's just a token rent increase. It is something we're asking Silver Spot to contribute in lieu of charging rent to helping with scholarships, which they've been doing willingly so far as it is. But I, it, it's not just a moot point. It is something that's, you know, we're asking for a give back to the community for using community structure. And, but I would like clarity on the repairs and maintenance section of this. And, you know, I, I know in the past, there's been things that have come across my desk that I'll see in the payment register. And it's like, hmm, why are we paying that? So again, I would like section 8.01 and 8.02 tightened up. And, and I don't think that it's necessarily, I, I'm more in tune with having a two-year revisit. And then when the city manager was asking about the five-year semi-automatic renewal, you know, I'm, I'm not sure if we want to take this lease out without reviewing it again as it's worded right now to 2035, which is 10 years. And that's an awfully long time. I mean, you know, you're, you're going to have gone through three or four sets of kids by then and the families and the dynamics in Brisbane can really have changed in those 10 years. So I wouldn't want the lease to just be a five-year plus an automatic. I am more inclined to see what the, the TK impacts are going to be. And I had to ask today what TK was. I've heard of pre-K, but not having children, I didn't know what TK stood for. And I kept seeing it referred to in documents that were in the staff report and found out it was technical kindergarten. So, hmm, trans, oh, I was told it was technical. So I guess I still didn't know what TK was. You know, I always thought it was preschool and then kindergarten, but I'm old school because I'm old.
It's new age. It's, yeah, it's a new, it's a new.
It's the new word for it. Anyway, I, I, so, but I would really want to see the lease language on the maintenance sections tightened up. And, you know, I think it's great and it's something that's really important that the city, since they are supporting Silver Spot, I think it's really important that we help promote it where possible. You know, we have signed. You know, we have signboards and, and newsletters and blasts and baby blasts and all those things that really can get out to Brisbane families. And I think that it's also good to see that, um, in the more recent documents that we got today, that there's more children that are Brisbane families. Um, because if Brisbane is the one who is supporting the preschool, it should be that we are supporting our community first, using our community resources that is, you know, taxpayer money, um, first for Brisbane families when possible. And certainly, if you need to get enrollment and you need the, the warm children in the room, um, you know, and going further afield for people outside the community works also. But I'm glad to see that it has gone up from a couple of years previous that there's more Brisbane families being helped with this program. So those are my comments at the moment, but I don't think we should be negotiating specifics across the aisle, um, you know, necessarily with this group when they don't have a chance to review it and discuss it in a, in a normal way tonight.
I, I, I'm not sure what you mean by that, but we'll go on to, uh, Councilmember Mack in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I'd like to applaud all of your efforts in trying to get a, a, a way stronger financial footing and investing, bringing in more kids, your recruiting efforts. That being said, when we talk about leases, having been a planning commissioner, a lot of times things rattle around in my head from that experience. And one of them is that we are not a real estate company and we deal with leases. And my experience being a planning commissioner and a council member is that we have a, a bad history in staying on top of leases. And for that very reason, I think, um, you're not a business, you're a nonprofit. And obviously, the city has worked with the organization closely over the years. Why shouldn't we have way more contact than just saying, oh, we'll see you in five years? Sink or swim, hope you're doing well. And I appreciate your last fall initiating that contact. But that's the type of thing that doesn't happen when you have five-year leases. And we're in a very volatile economy. The city's come out of COVID. We've been borrowing from reserves. So to say five years, nothing will happen and everything will be fine, there's a lot that's up in the air. I personally think that our city leases should be two years. Gives us a, a good chance to review. How are we doing? How are you doing? What can we do better? What can you do better? And I think that rapport is really important. And the fact that even just this being on an agenda tonight caused about fifteen people who are alums to write us emails, which, again, stirs up the interest. That's good for you. So I would propose we not keep this wording of five years. And if at some point we wanted to change it, we always could. But I would, I would stick with two-year leases. That's just my take on it, seeing some of the pitfalls of going with five. Thank you.
So Councilmember Mack, I just want to get some clarity. So do you think that, uh, it's important for the council to have an understanding of all the nonprofits that we might subsidize rent for, that we get an update of all those leases?
I'm not sure if I understand your question.
So, so we, we have?
We don't have other nonprofits renting a building.
Not, not a building, but other places. So, I mean, I, are you saying that we should have more of an understanding of, of those particular leases? And, and have perhaps a list?
No, there, there are no leases. I'm not sure if I understand what you're asking because tonight we're dealing with a, a lease for a physical building.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I, I really don't understand your question.
Oh, okay.
Can somebody else?
So.
Madison shake?
So I'm just, you know, I just want to get clarification. Uh, so, uh, City Manager Dennis, do we have, uh, do we have leases with other, or contracts with other entities?
BLT.
In regards to, um, maybe it's, you know, nonprofit or for-profit?
We have no other leases.
BLT, don't we have a lease with BLT?
Oh, BLT, that is accurate. I'm sorry. Yes, please. Thank you. Yes.
Okay, okay. All right.
That's not a not-for-profit, though.
I know, but that's the only other lease.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so any other questions? That's it. Okay, so, um, Carl, and, and this is a question you brought up and, and, um, if you could provide a little bit more clarity of, of, you know, how you would like to potentially reimagine the, the tot lot. So I, I attended your open house and, and it was fantastic and it was great to see all of you there. And, and I know besides Diana, you have two other teachers or, right? So the, these kids are getting a, an amazing education. And the enthusiasm that you all bring to the school and to the community is, is incredible. And so the, the tot lot that you're thinking about doing is, or reimagining it, is, is using potentially a, a Kaboom grant and, and some sweat equity. So Carl, if you wouldn't mind, maybe just sharing a little bit more of kind of what you're potentially thinking of doing?
So, yeah, firstly, I, I, I do think, uh, there might be some complications because it's a city public property, right? In terms of, uh, grant writing, but we have to explore some of those things. I do think there's an opportunity, uh, with the grass area in the back to potentially have an expanded space, maybe a portable, uh, because there's quite a bit of space back there. Of course, just a basic update of, of the tot lot. And, uh, I think, like we mentioned, some people didn't even know that tot lot existed as a public space, right? So I think there's also a lot of opportunity to kind of reintroduce that as a public location for young families. That's kind of, it, there's, there's other kind of, my, my opinion, not, I don't want to like, this is just like, in general. There's also opportunity, uh, with, this is further out, like additional space for TK. Like maybe, I don't know if that's going to work, if you have another portable there. Because there's, there's discussion about like TK spacing being limited in, uh, uh, BS, right? So, and you know, there's discussion like putting TK in Lippman or BS, but there's no space in BS and, you know, let's push the fifth graders to, you know, Lippman. But there's a, there's, there's going to be a lot of contesting comments on that with parents because they don't want, you know, fifth graders to go to middle school quite that early. Um, so there's, there's a lot of different ideas, but it's like, when you have more space, uh, there's more opportunity. And these are just, again, I think it's more important, um, us as a community to envision and work together with the parents, with the families, um, thinking about the finances, what the grants restrictions are, and go from there. So those are the general ideas I, I had, so.
Okay, oh, Diana?
Yeah, go.
So we have in the past tried to write a grant to update our play, the playground that we use every day. Um, and we came across, um, that it was to our knowledge that we cannot apply for a grant through the school for a city property. So the grant has to come from the city. And in ways that the city council or the, the community of, um, Brisbane can help with our, um, enrollment and getting our word out would be to do a, a better playground for that toddler age group so that the community will come up and use it. Right now, nobody's coming up to use it because there's no public bathroom there. And we cannot let them use our bathroom because it is a private property. So they have to, and if it's geared for toddlers who are in potty training and for a parent to have their toddler playing and then they have to use the bathroom, I, I can't let them in my school. They have to go all the way outside the gate, walk all the way to the pool and use that bathroom. So why would they want to, to use the tot lot even though it's a city playground? It has to be inviting. It has to be something that makes the people of this community bring their toddlers to that playground. And if they do, then it's more exposure for us because we are there every day.
Yeah, yeah, no, that, that makes sense.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question? What are you referring to, what do you mean by portables? Because I've, I know portable can mean many different things. Could you be more specific?
I, I think that the good example would be when I talk about portable, uh, like the example that Parks and Rec uses for, uh, uh, their, their preschool. Yeah, so like, you know, up in the blacktop on the BS, so that's one example. I think historically, Lippman also had some portables, which is like more modular buildings that are kind of put there. So it's not like stick-built.
Okay, so you're not talking just about building restrooms, you're talking about a new structure?
Yeah, I mean, that, I think that's the key thing. I don't think we're obviously finalized on the ideas, but these are ideas we definitely should explore. Like using that space, bathrooms, more space.
I think we're getting a far afield on something that's not part of tonight's discussion.
No, I, I agree.
What?
But, you know,
Yeah.
You know, what, what you're bringing though to the table and, and it's what you all have expressed and others have expressed in the letters that, that, you know, Silver Spot is, is a contributor to the community. And that this is just an, another kind of showing that you're willing to roll up your sleeves and, and work with the city to enhance, uh, a, a public, uh, you know, place that all kids and, and families can use. And how we go about, you know, potentially, uh, I guess, you know, working that out is it, you know, through Park and Rec, you know, they do an ad hoc committee or the city council ad hoc or facilities. You know, I guess I'll have to work with city manager and, and find what's the most appropriate vehicle for that. But it sounds like you're all into, to working with us to, to really improve that site.
Can I, can I just say something real quick? I think that it's, it's awesome, all the ideas that you've thrown out and, and the interest in investing in the tot lot. I think just for setting correct expectations sake. Like, I don't know that any of those things are really achievable in the near future. And I would hate that for any of you to walk out of here and feel like, oh, we've got this council buy-in to rehab the tot lot when, like, that takes a considerable amount of capital that the city really doesn't have right now. Um, it's an important conversation and it's a great conversation to have. It just, I would hate for you to think that that's something that we are committing to right now in this meeting. Um, I think ultimately for the tot lot to be something that is um, of interest to the broader community outside of Silver Spot, the key to that is bathrooms and that, you, you could make it a fabulous park. But it really is going to serve Silver Spot students primarily and not the broader community because you cannot take a three-year-old to a park with no bathrooms and find it to be an enjoyable experience for you as a parent af, after that first accident. You learn real quick. You're like, okay, we're going to the regular park after this. And yes, there are bathrooms there at the pool, but they give you two, like, ten seconds notice, like, you're not making it. So, you know, if we ever wanted to talk about putting money into the tot lot, I think first steps first, you got to put in bathrooms. And then, then you see what money is left over to do, uh, you know, a whole overhaul of the play structure. It's, it's one thing to paint and refresh and, you know, maybe put in some more sand and do a little maintenance of the grounds, separate thing to, you know, do a whole new playground. So, um, there's also a lot of ADA stuff now and sand is like a no-go. So, um, there would be a lot of conversations around like what that experience, sensory experience that is no longer there, Silver Spot has, the tot lot has the only sand playground in the city now that we don't have one at, um, Brisbane Community Park. So, um, the thing about the two years that I just wanted to insert here, a rationale that I have for that that I forgot to mention is that I really think that it's important for all, every council to be able to have an opportunity to do this. And meeting every two years ensures that. Meeting every five means that it's possible that someone could come on the council and leave the council and never partake in this conversation. So for that, that's one of the big reasons why I think two, on a two-year schedule is what makes more sense so that any council member elected can interface with you in this way.
All right, so after, uh, do you have something else you wanted to say?
Yeah, I, I wanted to echo Councilmember Davis's comments about
Recording in progress.
About the fact that, you know, overhauling the tot lot or adding a portable or any major thing like that would be going through budgetary concerns, which are pretty dire right now, I would say, as far as doing anything that's extra and fun and bright and shiny. Um, putting in bathrooms alone is a tremendously expensive notion. Um, and so it's probably not the first concern of this, of personally me or the city's first concern. Um, so it, it's something that we're here to discuss the lease and, and, uh, up, updates and upgrades.
Yeah, yeah, so what we have before us is this lease agreement. It was brought up. They're just giving us some information, you know, going into the bathrooms and, I, I know you mentioned the portable, but, uh, you, you know, you, you plan, right? They want to do something. I, I don't, I, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with listening. And you, perhaps finding ways where you could potentially do something down the line. The Kaboom Grant, Sweat Equity, we know that we put up that playground at the community, uh, park. We know that the school districts installed their playgrounds and, with very little money. So there, there are options, but that's something that's different, right? So I, I know that you don't know that, but that's okay. So what we have here, okay, well, so we have, it looks like three, uh, items here that council has brought up. One is the two-year lease and, you know, if that seems to be the majority of the council, then we'll go with the, the two-year. Uh, moving up the rent to a thousand dollars seems okay. Are we good with that amount? Right, so I got one nod.
I think that was a thousand eighty?
Okay, a thousand eighty?
No, I think it's a thousand.
Whatever.
A thousand eighty is what they've been doing.
Right, that, that's what they said.
I think.
So I thought you were referencing.
I just say it looks like a flat thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, is that, that good? Okay, and then tightening up section eight, that's something that you have brought, brought up.
What, what would be the consensus of section eight?
Oh, I'm sorry, you had three points.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
How would we change the language?
Maybe we let staff do that and bring it back?
We're happy to draft something that's more explicit related, uh, to
Would it be including the water or not including water?
Are you speaking to utilities or are you speaking to?
Section eight is util, is, also talks about utilities.
I think that's the council, like, council direction. As I understand the lease, that, um, the tenant should be paying that. It sounds like we've been paying that for some time, so we can have that conversation with, with Silver Spot. But my recommendation would be to continue with the lease provisions.
Why did that change? Does anyone, can anyone shed light on that? Was that like a COVID thing or how long has that been happening?
Water and sewer.
Sorry, Tom.
Um, we haven't been paying for water. And I remember when I asked about that, this is like twenty years ago now. Um, I believe it had something to do with the fact that there's, um, spigot on the outside of the, uh, building and also wa, uh, stuff the lawn that gets, uh, water and stuff.
You couldn't separate it. You are absolutely right.
There is a spigot on the side.
I believe that, that's why, that's the way it is.
Okay, that, that makes sense, so.
Is there a water fountain too?
There is a water fountain too that sometimes works.
Yeah. Keyword.
Well, the thing is
I think how much sand has gotten into it.
Exactly, and that's most water fountains in most parks.
Yeah, thanks.
So I, that, that makes sense to, for the city then to, to cover the water.
So we should tighten that up?
Well, a landlord can't pay for water, um, can't force a, um, tenant to pay for water if they can't separate the water.
That's right.
So do we need to tighten that up in here if the, they are, if the lease? So do we need to tighten that up in here if that they're, if the lease, does the lease say that they need to be paying for the water?
It says they pay for water in the lease.
So then we should take, strike that.
Yeah. It sounds like based on this current conversation that should be stricken. Thank you.
Yeah.
And through the chair, the previous question that I asked related to the extension, I, I didn't hear that, just two years and come back.
Two years, a thousand dollars. And the last item is 15 students.
15 students, yeah.
Yeah. And then you, you had that item three point O two. Frank, I'm sorry. Are you, you good with just leaving it in there?
I'm fine leaving it in there.
Okay. Okay. So with those items addressed, does anyone want to make a recommendation to move forward with the lease with Silver Spot?
So key points being two years, thousand dollars, 15 students, no water.
Correct.
And tighten up the language on maintenance.
Yes. Okay.
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What?
I'm going to abstain. I, I wanted to ask a question, but.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know what.
I was going to ask, is this still going to come back in a regular sentence, sec, a regular session to be formally approved? Or is this the final approval at, as long as they are willing to sign?
It's the, the pleasure of the council. The, I, I would, given that there was, there's some interest from one council member tonight related to the language in eight point O one and eight point O two, we could bring it back for that purpose. Otherwise, like, we could, like, we can move forward, but my recommendation would be to, to let us draft something that you could review again.
Yeah, I think that's.
With, with that, and that's why I wanted to clarify what the motion was to, before I answered. With that, I would say yes.
Okay. All right.
That's, that's fair to the tenant as well. They have a chance to look at what they're signing.
They want to see.
Instead of here, you better sign it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds good.
Great. Thank you, everyone. All right. Thank you for coming tonight and thank you for serving our community so well. You are a blessing to.
Glad it worked out.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to staff report. City managers report city updates and upcoming activities.
Thank you, Mayor Lentz, members of the council. The first thing I want to point out is probably something fairly obvious, sitting to my left or your right is the city's new assistant city manager, Christina Fernandez. We're obviously very excited to have her on board and this is her first meeting. So welcome, Christina. Secondly, I wanted to share that we've closed the survey for Visitation Avenue parking and traffic issues and we had upwards of 130 survey results. We're very excited about the amount of people who participated. That included businesses, residents who live on the street and users of Visitation. With your permission, we have a lot of great events coming up and I'm going to read those to you. This Saturday, the Frog Pond Restoration Day is taking place and of course, my phone just stopped cooperating with me. That will be held nine thirty to 12, meet at Cypress Lane and the Crocker Park, Park Trail. We have a very interesting experience on May 7th at the pool from seven to eight thirty. It's called a sound bath event. I'm just going to leave it there. I'm going to let people experience it without my description. I've, I've participated in sound bath events. They're very enjoyable. It's a, it's really a meditation experience. On May 10th is referred to earlier, and my apologies for not referring to this during the mental health month discussion, there is a walk of awareness from 10 to 11:30 and that will be held at the Quarry, Quarry Park at the entrance of the trail, 399 San Francisco. On May 13th, there's an event in Daly City that may be of interest to the senior community, the Light Up Your Health 25th Annual Senior Health Fair in April, senior club calendar, not sure what that part means, excuse me. That will be held again, May 13th, 10 to 12 at the Pacelli Center. Youth Storytellers Club is coming up again. We hold that three or four times a year typically. This next one is May 13th, 4 to 6 at the Brisbane Library. There's a wildfire awareness event on Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, obviously, 5 to 8 PM here at City Hall. We hope that you will attend. Mayor Lentz is holding his office hours, May 14th at the library from 6 to 7 PM. And that takes us through the next council meeting. Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Mayor, Council Matters, item M, Consider Letter of Support for Regional Transportation Funding Bill. Staff report, please.
Yeah. The, the staff report, I believe speaks for itself. The request tonight is to see if the council is interested in support, showing support for SB 63 through its own efforts. That would be a letter of support. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember questions?
Councilmember Mackin reported out on this somewhat at the last meeting, but I think that she could reiterate her concerns.
Thank you. You had in the packet the letter that CCG issued to Senator Cortez and McNerney, and there are no less than 10 points that CCG felt were problematic where they, they actually did not endorse the bill unless it was amended. So I would be extremely hesitant in writing a letter of support unless this was to be amended because if, if CCG, including the TA and Sam Trans are not willing to issue support at this time, I think we would be a little premature in doing the same.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Agree.
All right. So there was another item that was part of this and it's, it's coming from Chair Scott Weiner, I believe. It's a quest for $2 billion in new funding for public transit. Some cities have written letters to the governor and the state legislature. I'm not aware of any San Mateo County cities. During the commute.org meeting, SPUR had given a presentation and mentioned that. This list of agencies and advocacy groups are together, have joined to write a letter. So I had spoken to the city manager about, you know, can we do a letter of support? And he felt that that was up to the council if we wanted to write our own letter. Representative from SPUR sent myself and city manager Dennis resolutions from San Francisco and the city of Berkeley. So we can bring it back if you felt like you needed more information. Do you want to add anything else to that?
No, I just, looking at the council, I think it might be best to bring it back so there's some further information. Thank you.
Okay. So now we'll move on to countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. And I, I know that our last meeting, when we did the subcommittee reports, it, it did last a while. So myself and councilmember Davis met with city manager Dennis to find a, I guess, maybe a way to kind of streamline. You know, the, the, the subcommittee reports are pretty detailed and both of us agreed that if a council member wanted to provide an oral update, then that, that was, you know, totally up to their discretion. If council members wanted to ask the subcommittee members questions, absolutely. We also know that the countywide assignments, staff doesn't have access to that information, I guess, unless a council member wrote a written report and then turned it into staff. And so we felt that the sub, that the countywide assignments should be oral. So with that, we have these two items here. Do any council members want to give an oral report or is the staff-written information enough? Is, is that how you, you, you saw it, Madison, or is anything different?
Well, my big suggestion was that we should put, you know, where the council last left off if appropriate. For example, last time when we had the parcelar conversation, for me, it would have been helpful to have a line that said like, council-directed subcommittee to do X, then the subcommittee report, and then next steps is the subcommittee asking for direction, is the council needing, just so that we're talking, we're all on the same page about what we're talking about since there's not a really, there's no real staff report that we're looking at. So I just thought it would make it easier for us to not get stuck in the weeds if we could remember, have a refresher, where did the council leave off on this item? What has the subcommittee been doing? What are they looking for from us? So you'll see on there, it says next steps, you know, and we don't always need, you know, where did the council leave off on this because it's not always appropriate. But if you see on item B for Economic Development Subcommittee, it says next steps. And then that's just a little, a little update, so.
Yeah. So, all right. So we have these two subcommittees, items, Silver Eyes Subcommittee and Economic Development Subcommittee. Someone wants to give a presentation, they can, or we can, or have questions, or we can move on.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
No questions here. I'm satisfied with the wording provided by staff.
Okay.
And through the chair, we're very excited to bring the economic vitality item to the council the next meeting.
All right. Let's see. We have upcoming subcommittees. That's great. Any.
County.
Yeah. Any countywide assignments that someone would like to share with us, please?
Always. Anyone else have one that wants to go first?
This way, right.
No, I am good.
All right. Peninsula Clean Energy. You're all familiar probably by now with reach codes and this has been a focus of PCE involving technical assistance to all the city governments in the entire PCE service territory, which is San Mateo County plus Los Banos. And we have some good news that has come out of this. The California Energy Commission recently reported that 80% of new home construction is now all electric and a lot of that is due to these reach codes. That's a major milestone. Next item, you might be familiar with PG&E has a plan they've had for quite a while called Budget Billing Program. It uses an average of 12 months to determine a billing amount and average due each month. And it spreads out energy costs over the months so that it, it kind of evens out the peaks and valleys of energy use. PCE, that is a separate sheet in the PG&E bill, was not part of that. And recently PG&E has opened that up where any customer who is on budget billing with PG&E and you're getting your electricity from Peninsula Clean Energy, you will now automatically have your electricity included in the budget billing program. So that is a good thing. And it, and it won't be where a customer has to opt in if they're already on budget billing for their gas service with PG&E. Their electric through PCE will also be budget billed. Final, transportation and buildings. We noted they comprise two-thirds of emissions in our service territory. And you've probably heard me talk about DERs. Those are distributed energy resources. That simply means putting more power generation right in the midst of communities. And the way that's done is through solar and storage projects. PCE has made a big change in terms of mission statement and goals and, and what we're going to concentrate on this year. And the priority is going to be accelerate development of these DERs. And this will be accomplished through consulting, technical assistance, financing and advocacy. And is, there's no mystery why most battery storage, all the components come from China, which now are subject to tariffs of 145%. So if we're going to accelerate clean energy and sustainability in communities, we need to get these projects done because going forward, it could be worse. So in this vein, it was also reported to us that PCE customers have already one of the highest adoption rates in the country of energy efficient transitions. And that includes implementation of solar, heat pump HVAC, electric vehicles and heat pump water heaters. So we're trying to get the energy more centralized in the communities themselves. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that report, Colin. Any other countywide assignments?
I had a airport land use committee and we approved or found consistent, I shouldn't say approved, two low-income buildings in San Carlos of 85 units each to be built in the vicinity of the San Carlos Airport. And that was it.
All right. Thank you very much.
May, may I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I had read about that and there were concerns about the flights. Did they resolve that?
These were considered to be no hazard except during the construction phase when there is cranes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to written communications.
Correspondences were received from Maya Rena about the quarry. We received an anonymous correspondence regarding the Bank of America building. Brown Stevens regarding Hidden Heroes of Green Belt Awards. Straw regarding The Ridge. Madredin regarding Silver Spot. Miziko Jackson regarding Silver Spot and Vivas regarding Silver Spot.
All right. Thank you, Ingrid. All right. Oral communications, number two. No one's in the audience. I don't see anyone online raising their hand. So last chance to address the council on, on a matter that we did not address tonight. All right. Thank you very much. We will adjourn to closed session.